What's up everybody? This is the poker coaching study session and today we're gonna be looking at how to defend the blinds. Let's get started. Jacket suited here again. What do you guys wanna do?
Um, so the small blind range is going to pull from some of these suited gappers for sure. Um, fifty big blinds is gonna be a merge strategy between deep stack and like this forty big blind stack. So you'll see mixed frequencies of hands like this for sure.
That.
Definitely it raises it. It mixes I think at forty, sixty more so.
The suited eights Tim I think are actually as you get to the upper end of forty, a little past forty, they're gonna start three betting some.
Yeah, I think you're gonna three bet this.
I would say thirty percent frequency.
Oh.
Fifty bigs.
I see. Uh, action.
Yeah, you need.
And then how often is it the tree bed? Okay, it's a very heavy one, right?
Mm hmm.
Did he jam on that though? Fold. What does it says all in there? Did he jam?
Yeah, I think that's his response like a smidge of the time.
Alright. Wow.
Oh, we got we got solved.
Yeah.
Uh. From the big blind, I think we see less of these suited kings. I think these are a much higher frequency call.
Think king seven is one that does it. I guess it's six and king seven.
Yeah, never mind. They're they're in there. I guess it's some of that deeper stack strategy is starting to come through.
It's like a tough that raise.
Oh, it's it's the unicorn. Get out of here. It's the.
I thought it was king seven, honestly. I I remember it's a sore thumb. It sticks out. I always thought it was king seven.
Yeah, the overarching heuristic still stays true. Like you don't pull a lot from these.
This is the island boy special.
It is the island voice special.
Sometimes there are two king six and king seven. Sometimes there's just one of them. Who knows what they're up to and when?
Hmm, I feel like this could make a a check of check raise if we had the backdoor flush without the backdoor flush, maybe just a call.
I'm gonna go.
Do or fold? Yeah, he sizes up so when he size.
Yeah, I guess so. The open ender with the overcard is just such a strong hand.
Check.
Uh. Check and pray is good. Um, so it went check, check turn. I do think we've. We um, we don't play check here very often. I think we just polarize large ten big blinds or so.
Nineteen or ten?
Hundred, hundred nineteen.
Um, I think we're gonna struggle to hit calls from like Jack and Queen X if we go nineteen. So I would be inclined to go to.
It's got a lot of two pair combos.
Seven, maybe even.
Yeah. Seven or ten.
Did he check turn?
He did, Ken.
Yeah.
So he doesn't have too many.
Yeah, see if we go nineteen, we never get calls from the a hand like this, whereas you know, they may screw up and make calls if you. Go smaller. So versus the button. I think these are these are kind of attractive combos. Maybe the three is too low.
Attractive. It's more like king five, king sixteen, seven here.
When I when I was saying attractive, I meant just like these high low offsuit kings. Yeah, this is like, this is obviously a bit low.
I made.
King five, king sixteen, seven.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's the um. Little graphic that Louis made a while back.
Yeah.
And then it goes up one pip for the cutoff.
Exactly.
Check ball.
Uh, okay, okay, okay.
Wait checks.
I think we just showdown king high.
Call. Oh, God, how do you fold? You got king high. You did. You checked the call.
What about check to jam?
Yeah, I'm not that fucking good. We're crazy.
I guess it's a function of this bet size like.
You guys really?
No, I actually I probably fold there.
I've never.
But. Maybe it's a mistake.
Yeah, King high. I'm trying to get it to showdown cheap. That's as cheap as it's gonna get.
It's fair. It's fair. I mean. What's he really got that plays this line and bets that river that size?
Have some aces probably still, but should aces, ace five, ace four, maybe.
Maybe.
So you're calling every king here, Ken, right?
Yeah, I mean, I'm gonna overcall for sure, but I mean, I don't know how to split my range. That way I got king high. I'm good.
Yeah, well.
Better on bed.
See this here?
Oh, look at this. There's that reverse hierarchy going on here, right? So like if you have the higher ones, you have a bad blocker.
Yeah, you're.
That's what I was thinking too. Ten high bluffs is nine high bluffs, whatever. I I get it. I don't think about that yet. I'll get there. Eventually. Yeah, well, they're yeah, you want them to queen jack or something.
So it's like uh. Yeah, okay. I'm really surprised. Somebody said call here, but okay. So we call and it's just gonna have a pot. Our queen.
Alright, three bigs.
Hey, this is a can. I don't know. Was it necessary?
Catch them sometimes.
Uh, this is an easy call.
Uh, is it? Do you dream that there's ever a three bet?
This deep.
Come on. Come on. What are you doing? Queen, Jack. This is like dumpster tier.
What do you mean dumpster tiers? Like two face cards.
You got no relevant blocker verse under the gun. You got you got you're blocking your his folds, actually.
Oh, man, it's Chester aces.
Yeah, cool.
Uh, I'm just calling here.
Yeah.
Block that.
I like a block. I think a block's a good a good strat here.
Uh, you know what? Actually, I wanna check.
I would block.
I would block that too.
I don't think we have to. Um, we're gonna get called by better Jack still. He he has ace jack. Um, his kings is gonna check some. Back. So I don't know. It just feels like what are we trying to get called by? I'd rather have him bluff and bluff catch.
Hmm.
You could try and value bet against like a pocket pair.
I think with the way the betting. With the way the betting went and the way the board ran out, he's gotta call with some ace highs.
And he's checking tens on the turn too, so.
So five or two.
I would go to or check.
I would like trying to find a good reason to bet. But darn when check, check, and then we got second pair. So that's good enough, but the on a paired lower card, I'm not sure if it's good enough anymore. You know? Do we bet that with Jack here?
I feel like when we I don't know for for what it's worth, like when you bet the Jack, you have the fold to a raise, you can check call to most bets if you, you know, and you'll catch some bluffs that way.
And right, so it it's like super thin. In other words.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think the thing.
Betting the ace jack off.
Well, you're blocking his fault. You're blocking his value that you're trying to get money from at that point.
Yeah, if if you think of the ten as third pair, third pair got promoted ahead of us. And so the king becomes second pair. So the king is block betting.
Yeah.
Uh, the Jack is checking because it's now become degraded to third pair.
Yeah.
Hmm.
I mean, I just think like he's gonna check a lot of tens on the turn too, so.
Yeah. Jack seven off, okay.
I'm calling.
You could probably start squeezing in three bets here. At eighty.
What do you do against a four bet?
You call.
I prefer to just call here now.
Pure raise.
Your raise.
Pure.
Call the four bet.
Point oh one E V difference though, says.
You gotta call a four bet if you three bet for sure.
What are we doing with sixty? Hit the arrow. It'll change the stack depths, right? Or down the arrow up.
What arrow are you talking about?
Your your keys and your keyboard. Isn't that the quick uh? The shortcut to change stacked ups? Yeah, sixty. So now it's still going mostly pure.
What?
Hmm?
Well, yeah, dude, it's uh, I mean, you're deep stack poker at this point. Like you're just three betting the suited branch linearly, really.
Look at forty though.
Well, let me say something else. It's cool. Um.
What key this is a.
Up and down.
Oh, yeah.
Well, hey, well, dude, forty is completely different, right? He's gonna four bet jam on you at forty a lot and like. King, queen suited is like just losing heaps versus a four bet jam.
Yeah.
I wanted to show you something on up. We'll get to it on another screen. I'm gonna show you something cool.
Can that cap ball? Showing us the moves. Eleven here.
Oh.
Uh, so what did you do pre flop? You three bet, right?
Yeah.
Um, five. I I like five, I think, just because of the. Uh, probably big.
And then what do you do with queens?
Uh, you could probably still go big, but it may trend smaller.
Look at the stack that.
Yeah, I know. I know.
Wow.
I think we're looking to go.
I think um.
Just have to go big here.
Maybe it might be fine.
See, this is I don't find the sixteen into twenty two. I don't.
No, 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 no. You find that more often than you find check here. That's what you don't. You don't find the check is what you don't find here.
Well, is that even a part of the solution?
It's a double check mark. It's the it's the primary response, Louis.
I didn't think I didn't think queens or kings.
You have the two here. It's like over fifty percent.
Yeah, you have to check in these spots a lot more than I thought.
So um, so what do we play? We played.
Uh, for me. It's a bet small here because.
Yeah, you were talking about how you would bet like tens and jacks on the flop. Think of actually how you would bet kings and queens. You would check there to induce him to bet with an ace eight. Or a pair of tens or a pair of nines or a pair of jacks, and then you would check raise kings and queens here. Right to try and reduce the S P uh stacked pot ratio. So this hand is mimicking pocket kings and pocket queens going for that check raise on the flop.
I think we can check or bet small here.
Are you saying kings and queens are checking this fucking?
Uh, I think maybe uh kings.
Checking to check raise.
Pete's right.
I think he's more than.
Okay, okay, nice. Very nice.
And even the tens and jacks uh check way more than I would have thought.
I mean, we're checking fairly frequently just because the board like it doesn't really favor a three bet range.
I think we actually probably if we play, alright, we played bet on the flop. So I think you're gonna probably go. I don't know. You wanna go small again?
Twenty two.
Yeah, the flush comes in. He's let. It's not a good card for his range. So.
I like that.
It is a good card for his range. His concealing range.
How? Like I want it to be a lace, no?
What 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 is what is villain calling a C bet with?
Yeah, I kind of agree with Nick. I think this is a reasonably good card for his continue on the flop range.
Overpair single spades like uh.
Like he he's gonna he's gonna have some like.
Seven, seven, seven X maybe.
I went towards checking to protect our range. Um.
See, we bet we bet flop though, man. I think if we bet flop and we like equity completes for us, I think we still wanna bet. I think you just go smaller like I like twenty two here a lot, I think.
Oh, that's too big for me. I'm either checking or betting eleven.
Yeah, I like eleven because in my mind when the flush completes. A lot. I think if we have like pocket like kings here with like a one spade, we don't wanna play for all the good keys, right?
Yeah, we wanna check, I think.
I I no. I guess still bet a little bit. Uh, so eleven is pretty good.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
Not as good as check though.
I know. Basically, we were close to the solution and then.
Exactly what I said.
But check.
Yeah, and aces and kings with a spade are still mostly checking as well.
Yeah, I guess your range just has to check so much on this board flop and turn that like.
Like this board favors his range so much more, even after a C bet.
Yeah.
We just have to be protective of our range.
I was right on the sizing. When the flush completes in the three bet pot as the aggressor.
But very, very wrong about the checking. I'm not gonna let it go.
Well, I mean, honestly, do you check your spades there?
I I dude, I I'm not gonna lie. I I I misplayed this one like I I was voting for twenty two. I'm obviously screwing that up, right?
But like I would bet my spade here like uh small, the offsuit one, and then the suited ones, but I would bet all of them, right? And then the pocket nine with the spade or like a pocket ten of the spade, no?
You're just playing it too aggressively because you're you're on a board texture that favors his calling range, not our three bet range.
Yeah, but I I would make it like my strategy is just purely spade driven. I'm betting on my flash. And my offsuit combos with one spade. It's not too crazy, right?
Nah, man, I I don't think it's too crazy. I think uh. And honestly, it's hard.
Yeah, we know.
I would rip, man, like.
Yeah, I'm sticking.
Yeah, the problem here is I'm clicking it here a bit too often in game and then people just fold to me and I'm like, oh, yeah.
Well, he's folding singles. He's folding shit that's not gonna call a river anyway, right?
I would just all. Honestly, because I I would just call and then see the river, no?
I mean, his his raise range could have some hands like that are still trying to extract value from your single spade hands like a set, right? Or another overplay tenders or something.
I mean, look at the look at the E V though, like you're not making a huge mistake, Louis. I just think that, you know.
See, if you raise here back, uh, I think you're giving away the the strength of your handleup. Who's gonna call you?
Yeah.
Like this guy here calls with seven. What do you think Pop does with sevens or?
Never folds. It's a straight. It's a straight flush draw, dude, and it's straight. He's never folding that.
That's right. So.
But I get what you're saying.
Oh.
So would you just lead the river then, Louis, for value? Or would you just hope that he? That's a river.
Let's stop that. That's a good question.
If you don't three bet.
Um, I think you should look it up, maybe.
Yeah, I think if you're gonna uh get tricky, you need to have the nuts, not king high flush.
Well.
Do you actually want the king high flush? So he has the ace ace of spades bluff though?
And you just jam on the turn. He's probably gonna call.
Yep.
Either way, you're not really upset, right? I mean, even if he folds the equity, is that terrible? Big pot.
Well, this is our raising range on the turn. When he clicks it.
And then raising our nut flushes too.
I don't know if you get called that wide. Although it's a pretty scary rating, right? Ninety. Yeah, no, actually, it's been.
Honestly, I don't I don't think it's like. Okay, I don't think it's gonna be a hugely different differential spot, to be honest. It's not gonna make a big difference either way.
Okay, well, I think we can see like his range is not printing here, right? When he's forced with the our regen. When he's facing our our regen here.
One one other thing like, I mean, I don't know how much we're looking at at this, but I find like when people. Lead the river like that, like if you just call and then lead the river. Um, I feel like people are just very, very, very under bluffing that or like never bluffing at all when when they just like donk jam river. So like if you're worried about the strength of your hand being shown, I feel like that also. Could give away the strength of your hand. You know what I mean? Is that relevant?
And honestly, in my mind, turn raises are extremely uh strong too.
Yeah.
Yeah, we didn't make it to the river, right?
Not really.
So, yeah, what kind of river would be good to look at? Say it's a dudes clubs. And then spades.
How about like an ace? Because we have we three bets, so we got the best aces.
See, it's a thing. It's a thing like you can like call the turn raise and then just shove the river.
Okay.
And then, yeah, well, it's a a decent line sometimes. Alright. Next hand. Continue. Pocket nines.
Sliver raises.
I wanna call. Action. So the call pre flop is ninety eight percent. Uh-oh.
Dunk.
Uh, what do we do? I I like playing check call, I think, to be honest.
This is.
I'm gonna check raise. You can also dunk.
Definitely not.
Definitely nineteen point five percent of the time dunk.
I just don't wanna give them a chance to check back, honestly, on this texture with this head. Oh, that were fucked.
We can't raise that. No, no, just call.
No, 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 no. You call. This is this is like a very standard call versus that.
Why? Can we not? Got over pairs.
All right, hey, Louis, 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 talk through it for a second, okay? You, this is a completely uncapped range still. And just because we have an overpair doesn't mean we like beat that.
We're eighty deep.
And you're eighty deep is the other part.
And we're gonna have two pairs. We're gonna have straights that can even those are gonna call though, but like we have stronger hands. We don't have raising range against the sizing.
Yeah, I got double docks.
Bye. Look at Joey. Look at Joey. I like it. I like that feature.
No, don't call. Okay, we're gonna do it with Joey. Oh, my God.
You fish.
I can't erase it now.
Double dunk.
Dunk again?
Oh, we fold. We fold some fours. We don't get to.
Double dunk.
Oh, I said no, I was kidding.
Don't get to dunk.
I'm not that four bears.
As we.
If it was a seven maybe.
To that sizing.
You know, it may be a low frequency thing. I think it's kinda goofy. But I I would play check.
Here.
I think if it was a seven, you might have some double.
The flop sizing?
Yeah.
Uh, king four, queen four, jack four.
Because I thought we would be calling all of the fours. Yeah.
Yeah, like a.
I mean, I maybe on the pitch because I'm calling them.
Seven or five, we might double dock.
I'm sure Dave is like zero. I don't know.
It was just an insanely big bet on the flop. Like you don't really see that in game too much. So. I would venture to say like.
I kind of disagree because you guys clearly don't take this dunk lead as much as I am, right? I have this feeling from like there there. So whenever I do it, honestly, people lose their minds.
Well, that's fair. Honestly, I I'm not doing a lot of donking these days.
I'm doing it a lot and like some people like they overfold to it or they lose their mind to it.
Or they just have like pocket kings to it.
But it tries seven or and a five.
Very rarely, man.
We have double.
Honestly. And then honestly, if they have pocket kings like a lace is gonna come on the turn to save your action. You know, and then when they they lose their mind, you can just click it and they're just like lost a little bit here. And you're kind of got good equity, right? Kind of.
All right, maniac. Show us how the maniac is gonna play this turn.
Let me see seven of clubs and five of clubs on the turn. I'm curious if we have any double docks with the same.
We don't have double dunks, Ken.
It's look at a seven of clubs and a five of clubs.
The four was like the best, no?
No.
Why not?
We didn't can. We didn't dunk.
Hey, did.
No, we didn't.
Yes, we on the yeah, he talked, didn't he?
Yes.
Love, yeah, bet two.
Yeah.
Got raised.
And double dunk on a seven, can I?
Yeah, seven's good. How about a five?
Oh, a six?
Five.
Let's see. Let's look at the six first.
Probably not as much.
Why not?
Oh, there it is.
I'm shenanigans. Why not? So I thought the four would play exactly like that. Why would why?
So we have more two pair of seven. We have more two pair with the seven, six, I guess.
Like what is this?
He has ace four suited.
I don't know. The four is uh.
That's not.
Have a lot less fours. First is under the gun. We have a lot less fours.
Yeah. Uh, what what else do we wanna know?
Five. Clearly, it'll be a double dunk, right?
Well, that makes a four liner, so.
It definitely is the best.
Two percent. Nice.
Double dunk.
Double dunk. Double.
Maybe even an eight, actually.
So, alright, let me draw my fancy little line against the solver. See if you need. I click it one percent.
Eh.
What is he gonna do? Oh.
He's gonna do. He's got.
Oh, this is unfair.
It's always gonna be that.
This is rigged, man.
That's what.
This is the this is the most obvious.
Early position.
Exactly. This is the most obvious shit that's gonna happen.
What do you mean? He had a better overpair.
What do you mean?
Raising under the gun. This net.
You guys are knit and this is a scam. I'm going home.
This is our micro king leader. Got a raise.
Yeah.
Uh, bet small.
No, but big.
Five, okay, maybe bets, maybe.
No.
Have the spade, man. Come on.
I think you need to check here, actually.
I'm checking some and betting small.
I think you need to check with all your uh.
So we wanna check a lot with pocket jacks, but what's the driving factor?
I have a spade.
Position.
Spade, the spade, the spade. Where the three better. This is a great board. Have the spade. You're gonna bet.
Oh, five.
I'm still.
No, 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 we're deep.
It's really dry, though. We could get away with a smaller bet here. I don't think we have to bet big on such a dry board.
We're deep. Okay, maybe.
We're gonna have big bets, but this hand class.
Yeah, I'll see though for a small bet this time.
This hand class does not wanna bet big.
I know.
Kind of not really. How about five point five or check?
What?
Would you think the range like?
Checking, man.
Yes, there is.
Out of position, there's.
Yeah, you know, if you look at this, Louis, like your strategy clearly advocates for the sliver here, which is the minority response to actual checking.
No, I wasn't the bit five. Look at this.
Yeah. Could you show what the range uh was on the flop?
The range, I think, is gonna be big enough.
I'm just curious like how much checking is happening.
See, listen, okay, not that much, well. Majority. Nick said it exactly.
Thank you.
Said the flop is gonna do a lot of big betting, but this hand class doesn't really benefit from that.
I'm surprised there's so many.
The spade, I thought we could. No.
Oh, because you just.
I mean, it's doing it more a little more with the spade than non spade looks.
Just in my head, but queen, jack with the spade off with nothing, right?
Man, if you're gonna if you're gonna try to sell a big bet here, I wanna see some more checks.
Who?
Checking fifteen percent of the time. I'm surprised with it being out. I guess because it's king three two.
Yeah, king high board.
Well. The old adage, three bet, C bet from small blind, I'm finding is not. That the solver does do quite a bit of checking after.
Yeah, I just started running this.
Only check fifteen percent of the time, so we don't check very much, right?
It's on this flop.
On this flop, yeah. But I think on a lot of them, it's closer to like forty, fifty percent, though.
We can uh we can look at reports quickly. Look at this. We look at the bar here, the bottom bar. So if we look at like ace high boards, ace low, low mixing. So a lot of low small bets on ace low, low. Then as soon as you get too broadways, like the big bet component starts to kick in.
But you're ignoring all the checks too.
Yeah.
All the what?
There's a ton of checks in all of them.
Some of them are fifty.
All the who?
How much checking is happening?
Well, look at look at king high boards that. Where's the?
Yeah, king high. Yeah, yeah.
They're shaking here.
This is an awesome uh, view, I've never seen this.
Yeah, so no checking here, come on, come on, units.
Okay.
Oh, look at this too, hold on, don't twitch, I'm gonna show you, alright, okay, where are you done?
Sorry, it's check media.
No, don't do, ah, I don't want you to get it out of table, okay?
Look at this units. There's no checking here, you're betting.
There is checking.
Is that the overall percentage?
There's literally more checking than any other individual action.
Go back to the last few when you're done this.
Nick, man, you're hurting Louis. Take it, take it easy on him, man, take it easy on him.
So you see um, you see where it has all the bed sizes on the upper right?
All the bed sizes.
On the right, you got the squares, you see the squares now, you see the drop down box?
Drop down here?
Hit that, now hit um, view as, hit the drop down bo- box where it's viewed as, and then click chart. I like this view. You like that?
What is that?
That's your best.
Ah, very nice, so that's the other chart basically.
Nice.
So that's the other chart where we see all the betting. And what's going on, but it's not, yeah, so okay, so you check or you bet big. In general, and then you bet small also, as much as you bet big. Okay, so very nice.
Wait, wait, Louis, check something, go for check. Did trips boards.
Let's start with a flop next time.
Trip boards. And that, another trip board here, can I? King, king, king. It's mixing, right, this king, king, king is better than. And then you see here. Ah, it's here.
Okay, so.
So the the lower it gets, the more you bet big. But ace, 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 it's like you bet small, I think.
And then the more you bet big, the more you have some checking in the range.
And then. Two are ways on the board, the more you almost bet everything, whereas if it's just one high too low. Overall, you can check.
Zero checks on any ten jack queen.
One high too low, right?
Also important to note that this is the strategy only at eighty specifically.
Yeah, this is eighty.
Alright, and here's, do the arrows work here? Oh my goodness, what the hell is this insanity? This is sixty big.
It like took us a year to learn some fucking shortcuts.
I don't think these shortcuts were alive a year.
Maybe not.
Wow, look at this, at forty big blinds, we go, we don't check anymore. Happy days, but at fifty, we at sixty, we charge to check more. At eighty, we take a little bit less, hundred. Oh my goodness, that's thirty, hundred big line, we check forty percent of the time, units must be extremely happy about.
You you see the strategy here is that add, the more deeper you are to three bet pot, the more you check.
Yeah.
S S P R is deeper.
Yeah, and then it seems to be check or bet big here, right? The deeper you are, you start to lose the, oh, I broke it. I destroyed it by trying to go above hundred base. Alright, very nice. Spades, hey, wanna bet? Small.
I really don't know on this one.
We can check, I think it's majority check, I would bet small because spade.
I'm blasting my way out.
Blasting is not so good.
Hey, who's, hey, who's?
So the ace of spades is particularly bad for our three betting range because we have a lot less flushes that complete while he saws a ton.
So what if we turn ace of diamonds, then we definitely still checking now, right?
Um, this hand you could check or bet, I lean towards checking on ace of diamonds, it's gonna mix a lot heavier than this, though.
I think also like having the jack of spade makes us more inclined to be be okay with checking, like we can improve and we don't wanna get raised off our hand.
I think we're just doing a lot of checking on this card in general, I could be wrong, but.
No, yeah, I think that's more of a driving factor, what you said, sure.
Louis, what's our check frequency on this card?
Eighty six percent. Well, I mean with our hand.
No, I I just mean our range. Yeah, seventy.
Seventy, yeah.
This is not a, even though it's an ace, it completes the flush, which we don't have a lot of, so it's bad card for us.
Yeah.
No, we put the boxes back, I I like the box to look better.
Alright, you don't like it like that, you see exactly what the range wants to do in like one view, no? Whereas when it's like the other one, it's a bit weird.
You could do uh, group, click grouped with charts.
Ah, that's like.
But the other view gives you the sizes, right?
Yeah.
It's the uh, oh, yeah, I like that.
Alright. Why don't we the check, let's see, oh, that's good, half pop, three or twelve?
Uh, we can go value here, I would. What about twenty, bet twenty and fold to a jam?
We have the second nuts, how we fold into a jam?
Alright, we'll call it off.
I like twelve.
I like twelve.
I like twenty.
Bunted.
He's gotta call with tens and nine.
Gonna call with exactly the damn queen, watch him.
Or four, five. What the?
He had like the four, so the four is, he thought it was a good blocker, what a fish.
I I'm tagging that guy in game as a caller.
Yeah, it's the fish. Doesn't know how to play well, can't play G P L.
Can't lay down a pair of aces.
That's what's what's kinda funny, Nick. It's a, I don't know if you know who Joe McKeen is, he's he won the main event. For and before I knew who he was on Poker Stars, like I had this tag on him that he was a station and some. Maybe I don't know what I'm doing.
Makes you reevaluate your note system a little bit.
This was like three years ago, but still, yeah.
That's pretty.
Stay humble, always stay humble.
Three bet.
Maybe low frequency, I think it's more of a call.
No, it's a high frequency three bets, you don't three bet this year, what do you three bet, what, tell me?
Suited branch.
What do you do with king jack here?
Jack suited, three bet.
Offsuit.
Uh, call.
Uh, call.
You guys.
Yeah, I think this deep the, a lot of the raising is coming from suited side.
Low frequency and then king, actually, king jack's more popular than king queen.
Well, I said king ten, cause like.
It's actually, at fifty, it's still pulling pretty heavily from this, the offsuit branch.
Yeah, like I don't care if I get blown off of king ten, so that's why I said that one.
It makes sense.
Yeah, it makes sense, it's it's taking a more polar strategy from the suited side.
He's not opening off suit tens, he's opening some off suit jacks, though.
Alright, so we tree bet, it's gonna be easy.
I I love it, fa- famous last words, it's gonna be easy.
I'm about.
You know, we should do a session, like we should call it like check finder, where we force ourselves to practice the check lines.
That's called every time I play poker.
It would be a really good exercise for Louis and me, to be honest, I I I miss a lot of the. I I screw the check notes up, obviously.
What the hell is he doing? He doesn't even have a spade, why would he call the flop? Uh, this guy's not good, man, he's so marginal.
He can't fold, especially when the guy see bets a hundred percent, you know, you gotta mark on the guy, it does, he see bets every flop.
That's a hundred and ten percent.
How does he call this up with without the spade, if he has a spade, sure, understand. Oh my god.
Nowhere near a fold.
Oh my god. Yeah.
Minor phrase.
What do you mean minor? This is the core of our strategy, this is the offsuit island board.
You can bet.
Yeah, you can bet big as well.
Button's got decent word coverage there.
Yeah, feels like it's more of a small bit, with the main hand maybe big.
Yeah, the spade, king spade, maybe drive up your bed size a bit.
So, yeah, the six. It's mixing.
Take five, there's a spade, this is spade, a driving factor.
Yeah, uh, for the king five at least.
Yeah.
And then what's the size on the spade, king five, it's gonna be big, like this. You see about the 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 flush, the offsuit combo, with one spade in your hand, it's a big on the flop. Um, just raising?
Versus call, if we can raise some call.
I think this mixes.
It's gonna mix.
Let's see a raise, I think, eights.
I always think like we block the bottom of his opens with eights or no? Yeah, eight.
Where do you open from?
Cut off.
No, the bottom should be.
Ace eight off, like suited eights.
Well, you don't really count the suited, cause there's only four compared to twelve off suits.
So, okay, I guess that's probably suit them nice, right, it's probably nine X, but.
The call. Shit, you run out.
It's easy to play. We win, no, we lose.
Hmm, free bet this song.
Can we?
I think so.
Think you got business in here?
Might be versus button, isn't this the triangle, is it button, can we do this against cutoff today?
I think uh, I think Ken's uh, Ken's probably okay here, I think it's a a reasonable hand. Maybe at some frequency, it's not gonna be like super big.
Fold, why are you folding?
Yeah, dude, folding is like bad.
Well, I don't know.
Well, it just told us it was.
Do I need, do I need to put my tie on?
Like, look at this, it's like zero point zero three in the range.
Oh, quit with the justifications and just say you made a mistake.
And then, look at this, you're blocking all the bottom.
Doesn't matter.
We saw one second ago that we were blocking the bottom, so.
It's still folding jack, hmm, is he folding?
Just that we had no business in here.
Yeah, but it does have a frequency of raising and calling.
Like suited eights here, and suited nines, but good suited nines.
You're still getting better hands to fold.
So you guys wanna tree bet?
Sometimes.
Okay, let's do it, what do you guys wanna do now? Wanna check, I guess?
I would probably bet small.
Small like part?
That's what I would do.
Having the nine in your hand, you don't wanna size up a little bit?
No, the second pair.
Uh, probably not.
That's all, that's good.
I have pot.
Um, I wanna go big now, two flush draws, um, a lot of us continue, still have their equity here. The only thing that changed is we improved.
So darker blue.
So the pot will be sixteen, we'll have twenty behind if we bet fifteen, I think that's plenty big.
Actually, I think you're right, I'm sorry, the S P R is in kind of a goofy spot, right, so I think fifteen's probably good here.
I'm checking.
You wanna check, Nick wants to check.
Never check.
I'm going twenty two.
I'm, yeah, I'm not gonna use that word never, but I would go fifteen here, I think, fifteen or twenty two.
Fairly confident, this combo is not gonna check.
I would bet small again, no?
No, maybe.
You guys wanna? But it's a seven, like he doesn't connect with it.
Yeah, but he's got draws.
I'm I'm looking at the draws, though.
He's got over pairs.
Actually, his backdoor flush draws.
They're cut off, yeah, and he opens like uh, kind of loose and he calls the loose, pretty loose as well, no?
I'm wanting, I wanna bet big here to get value from hands like jack ten of hearts.
Okay, which one you wanna do, I would go small again.
Well, it seems like I'm outvoted, I'm the only one wanting the twenty two.
Zero checks.
Now you just jam. Get called by.
Tens?
Six, five folds, see, six, five, that's why I wanna go bigger on the turn. You wanna like put those kinda hands in a box, as opposed to like giving them an easy call.
Okay, so I think that's a nice time strategy. But we got lucky with this time, right, so.
Who got lucky? You mean we had a lucky flop? And turn?
You were actually ahead all the way, you were ahead pre flop, head on the flop, head on the turn, head on the river.
Okay, whatever.
Yeah, lucky with our hand.
Yeah, lucky Louis, like, okay, yeah, whatever.
Yeah, because I don't find like it's a sliver on pre flop and then we hit, we hit. More pre flop.
Oh, come on, mister, I'm gonna advocate for a big, big bet when it's twelve percent, every hand.
I wanna point out that the nine, seven suited there, three bet more than your king five off the hand before.
That's right, Ken, give him some facts.
Yeah, Louis, get the bit, the cutoff and big blind, the. Three bet line also follows down the single, the the suited connectors and suited one gaps.
Can we negotiate a three bet here?
I I walked away, I don't know, man.
No, it's ace eight, not ace nine.
What? Ace ten, ace jack, ace queen, ace nine, I think's in there, ace eight, white pole.
Oh, why does no one listen to me?
Well, I heard you, I just was arguing against you.
It's versus cutoff, you don't three bet, offsuit nines here.
Why not?
Blocking the bottom of their range.
Cause the bottom of this range is offsuit nines.
Exactly, so you wanna attack, use like yeah.
Yeah, you wanna use eights, like I said.
I mean, it's using nines, so.
Well, it came like it folds some worse.
But not ace nine.
So, yeah, but it's not.
Look at, look at how many eights is used compared to nines, nine, eight suited, ten, eight suited, jacket suited, queen eight suited, king eight off, ace eight off. Now you attack the bottom.
So why you do it with king nine here, but not ace nine?
King down on blocks aces that can fold.
That is correct, that is correct.
You basically do it with like a lot of offsuit nine and a lot of suited nines, a few suited.
No, you don't.
But you can get like worse. You can get worse aces to fold when you use the king, queen.
I mean, you're attacking ace ten offsuit and like ace nine offsuit almost exclusively, like if you have those combos.
Majority of the strategy is like suited eight and offsuit eight, right?
I would, I would be careful saying the majority.
The jack nine and ten nine is part of what I said last hand, against the cutoff and button. Going down along the pairs axis to suited connectors and suited one gappers, have some three bets.
We call here, and then we true bet what they say.
This is where I have to talk myself off the ledge, I already won a three bet, but I know I've been check raised, but I know I need a spade, so I have to be really good at talking myself off the ledge when he see bets.
Nice and slow, Ken, walk it back.
Uh, he bets bigger, so now I get an easy, I don't have to raise for sure. Got a call, right?
I think I folded the sizing.
I mean, it might fold some.
I'm folding this, I think.
Nope, your fault.
Your fold.
I fold. Although it might pull the ace two and ace three now, okay.
Into the muck.
Yeah. Call.
I call this deep.
This mixes.
Check fold.
Check fold or do we call a small?
I'm not, I don't usually fold pairs, but on this texture, just I'm out.
Yeah, dude, this is yikes.
I think we can, we can overfold that board.
Love it, he's gonna triple barrel.
We got scan.
Fold. Easy fold. Fold. I don't fold this, but it might mix.
Should fold this. Folded it to a cutoff raise and then you wanna fold it, you wanna.
I was wearing the small blind.
I was small blind last day.
Oh, I'm sorry, I misread that.
Yeah.
This is still a fold over CP this deep.
You call it street?
Yeah.
No.
I call ace two as well, I don't give a fuck.
Oh my goodness, Ken.
He's offsuit ace X play terribly.
Cause I'm looking to play low, low boards, if I hit a low board, I'm gonna play my hand aggressively and steal a lot of pots, I think.
This is why these bad offsuit aces are trouble. You're just dominated so much.
Yeah, the EV is like. As bad as it gets.
I mean, early in tour, late, later in tournaments, I fold easily, but early in a tournament, I defend more.
Uh, this is a call.
Do we bet a little bit?
Yeah, 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 maybe, I, I play call here a lot in game. Uh, I think this is.
At a position we get to size up sometimes, uh, I don't think this fan wants to though.
Yeah, just bet small, I'd bet five.
No.
You want to bet two?
I would.
It's a paired board that misses both ranges.
Yeah, but we got the over pairs.
Oh.
So it does size up. I was right, out of position, you get to size up some, but I didn't think this combo would.
That was my thought too, I thought like, are, we're mimicking jacks and kings, jack kings are gonna wanna bet small. We had like ten jack or ten queen or something, I would wanna size up.
Yeah, he just can, he's gonna defend really poorly on this board, right? If we give him, we throw one big blind out there, he could just call everything.
Oh, actually, what should we do here? Check?
Bet ten or check?
Bet ten or check? So, okay, we bet them. Alright, happy days.
Raise.
Yeah, this is probably a good raise.
Either one's fine.
Yeah.
Ooh, alright. There's a lot of can, uh, completed equity here and a lot of draws, I wonder if we size up or go small, I would think I would go small in game.
I'm going ten.
We have this spade.
We're sixty big zip, we started this hand?
I think, yeah, fifty.
I.
Fifty.
I don't hate jamming either.
Jamming, oh.
No, 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 no. There ain't no jam, but it's small.
But it's, it's, this board texture is the one that has jams and three bet pots.
No.
Yeah, you're in the.
Jack ten eight.
Well, no, not jack ten eight, jack ten like five. You want the ones with, you want the ones with uncompleted equity, if there's flop straights, it's not gonna go so bananas.
Yeah.
Gotcha, gotcha.
But yeah, yeah, you're in the neighborhood, Nick, for sure, like these two-tone middle and connected boards, you do have some bananas type activity going on.
There it is.
Well, that's three to a straight, you gotta put like a gapper in there. Put an eight in.
Ooh.
Yeah.
Maybe I was wrong.
Go jack ten eight.
I know, jack ten four. Jack ten five.
You see like twenty-one, and that's, that's rainbow too.
It won't change much because there's already made straight, whenever there's a made straight, your bets go down slightly.
He, he doesn't have many made straight, so he's got nine, seven suited on uh, jack ten nine or jack ten eight.
Oh, happy days, oh my goodness. You can't fold, right?
Um. Versus metal position, we could probably.
We can't, but look at these nine bet sizes. That's stamping, Ken, you wanna use one of these eight bet sizes here? You sure about that?
So, I kinda figured out, I think I have an idea why they do that. I watched some of their videos.
Who's there?
GTA.
GTA whiz, okay.
And essentially. Even though the bet sizes seem odd, they're often looking to set, it's, they're often trying to set up a geometric sizing, which I didn't think they were doing, I didn't realize it, but they.
They had eight different sizes on the turn for probe strategy. Eight. On a spot where we check.
I was gonna say, we should bluff here.
What? You wanna turn it into a bluff?
Why?
With the four liner?
Seems terrible, Joey.
Seems scary, man, but maybe.
It was in there.
What's it?
It seems reasonable. You're like always.
I'm not gonna say, I'm not gonna say it's bad, I'm just like, uh, I, I don't have it in my game.
Maybe with, still in it with all of them.
Doesn't mean it's bad, though.
We're the big man, right? And six, five off? Yeah, I thought we need a spade for that, but. Joey, what are you?
The space predominate.
How do you find that kinda thing, Joey?
The five wasn't gonna win on its own anymore with the four liner. So I was gonna turn it into a bluff.
Oh, okay.
It doesn't have showdown value after the four liner hits.
Yeah, for sure. So you wanna just turn it, okay.
I wasn't sure how much to bet.
Like I said, a block sets maybe is a reason why I could make a five a bluff there. Struggling to find bluffs, so you have to use some low pairs of blocks, that's I guess.
Still unsure about sizing, what sizing? Mixing? With the spade big? Well, the spade small?
Check fold.
Do you call ones with the five of spade?
Nope.
Why not?
Versus onto the gun, two broadways. Sevens might, did, were sevens calling?
Nope, as you said, two broadways versus CP. We fold like almost every pair.
Right, even sevens are pure folds.
Tens.
Call.
Hmm, I, I honestly, I fold this in game usually if I'm not like bluffing this.
It might raise some, I would, I'm calling now, you're versus cutoff, you can't fold any aces, right?
Maybe, you're right. I, 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 yeah, I just. I don't know. Ace deuce off is.
The nuts?
Check raise.
Apparently. You could check raise the, uh, not versus that.
Give us the ace of spade. Use the ace of spade.
I, the ace of spades is gonna be way more often, but I still think this can raise some.
This is just gonna be a call. Okay, no, it's raising plenty.
Way better with the ace of spades, obviously, and gin. Doc.
Six.
I have pot, probably small.
Now it's missing sizing.
Wait, do we, do we check raise?
No.
Yeah, we, we check called.
Check call and then hit it.
He didn't pull the trigger.
Yeah, but I'm thinking check here.
Or dunking. I just don't know what size.
How, what do you think that, alright, nevermind.
I was right, it was small.
Okay, what do you think of duck percentages here? Like, you're gonna be checking mostly.
Well, it's thirty-three percent.
Yeah, but you're checking mostly.
Yeah, well, I'm aggressive.
Hey, this is why it's better to check.
Yeah, raise, uh, yeah, you gotta raise, right?
We can probably rip.
I don't think.
I.
No good.
Just click it.
Click or?
I call, I call versus sizing.
It's, it looks like with the best sizes, it's probably gonna call, but I can't help myself.
I like.
I kinda, I like.
All in.
I was gonna say jam or call. I didn't like these, I didn't like these clicks.
Joey, why you wanna jam here? Makes no sense.
Yeah, it does, man, like you're gonna get value from all of his over pairs, you're gonna get value from all of his spades, you're gonna get value from his sets, like, there's river cards that come out.
Don't you wanna raise thirty ever?
Doesn't even make sense to raise thirty.
No, it doesn't, with the stack sizes, it doesn't make sense to raise thirty.
I, I agree with Galen, it's check or jam.
You don't wanna leave him the ultimate bet, the ultimate, the, the last word, no?
There's uncompleted equity here.
The SPR is like out of whack.
What about the last word equity?
Last word equity?
Yeah. Okay.
Sounds like some live poker shit.
So all in, no less. He calls with kings, oh.
So like, if a six comes on the river there after you've clicked it, like you've almost given him like an escape plan.
Agree that.
Uh, this is probably a good three bet. No, 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 wait, uh, yeah, it is, yeah, it is, it definitely is.
No, 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 no.
I'm sorry, I was thinking from the big blind, but then I remembered we're deep stacked, so like, if we were like forty, this would not be as good of a three bet.
Correct, I would pure call it at forty.
Yeah, but since we're like so deep, it's definitely gonna be good.
You guys sure? Cause I would the tree bath also at forty.
Probably less at forty.
Forty, I'm pulling like very hard from the offsuit branch.
Oh, okay, doesn't tree bet at all, actually.
What are you doing on a flat neck?
I don't know what it is.
If you three bet, you gotta bet small.
Yeah, bet small.
I'm checking.
It's an ace high board and it's two tone.
I'm betting.
I'm not gonna go big, checking is very reasonable.
Not fully hearty, he's not fully hearty, any aces to our three bets the problem.
Alright, so this is, this is tricky, if you call this, you're basically capping yourself. So, but you can't really raise here, so this is why like, I'm like.
I disagree with you because our range is gonna mostly just call here.
What are you doing with like ace king here? Ace king of diamonds?
See, betting the flop.
What are you gonna do with like ace ten?
See, betting, never checking?
Need to find some checks with those hands.
I'll have some aces in my checking range.
If you want me to have a checking range, maybe pocket nine? No spades?
A set.
So you're saying you're very straightforward?
Yeah, you're capped is what I'm saying, like, that's what I'm saying, you're capping yourself.
Aces and, pocket aces and pocket jacks play the same way.
I don't know. Would you call that straightforward?
Joey, do you think all of those pocket aces and jacks play check call here or play check raise here?
And Joey, do you think ace king and ace queen are pure c bets?
Mostly c bets, not pure.
I'm checking my weaker aces.
What do you think the check percentage on them is?
Low, less than a quarter.
You gotta check.
Never, 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 zero.
I think it's gonna be like twenty to thirty percent.
So this is what I was kinda.
Nah, 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 nah.
Ace king, ace queen.
Nah, 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 nah.
You're a check, worse aces.
Oh, hey, look at.
Oh, nah, 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 nah.
About twenty percent.
Nah, 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 nah.
With the spade.
Oh, nah, 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 nah.
Yeah, the ace king and ace queens are just too strong, right? Ace jack, ace ten though is in there, some, the wheel aces are in there a lot, I guess that protects.
Funny how you check out for the time though.
There's a lot of checking.
But bucket nine without the spade, I was willing to check that.
Will, willing to? I like, I like how you phrase that.
I'm just check calling this, I'm never gonna rate turn this into a bluff. Oh, he changed his line.
Oh, he checked, checked.
We're not gonna fold, right? Set three bet button half second pair.
Oh. See, this is, this is why I hate calling the flop, this is why I hate calling the flop.
Well, when we replayed it, it went check, check, Galen.
It went check, check, we didn't call.
Oh. Oh, okay, sorry, it replayed, I, yeah, never mind. Redacted.
He's gonna jam. Oh, God.
He took his one shot.
Happy days. That hand was easy.
I just.
Let's call, we got fifty bigs.
Are you sure?
First hijack, man, it's first the hijack, what are you doing?
I could do scan, he, you don't wanna jam here?
Oh.
I miss the good old days, Ken.
Galen, do you three bet this?
Thirty I jam.
No, 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 not from the hijack, not versus the hijack.
Oh, someone's saying jam?
Um, if the button opens, I might jam this.
At fifty?
Yep.
Yeah, it's okay.
Yeah, ace king gets jammed at fifty.
There's gonna be some little pairs jamming fifty versus uh, the button, and maybe even a couple from the cutoff, I think. I'm gonna eat my words, aren't I?
Louis, you gotta put a, a button raise in to find the answer.
Okay, that's it.
No.
It's a button jam.
No, not a button jam.
All blind fold.
Say button raise to two point one.
What kinda crazy stuff are we doing here?
I'm trying to help Ken with this bucket doos here, he's setting with.
You're facing the hijack.
Oh. I thought you were looking for the answer, what happens if it, what changes if it's a button opens instead of hijack?
Look at this, Ken.
It's just thirty. Oh, yeah, I saw, I might jam.
I thought he was doing that too, Joey, but he's really just stabbing at Ken for a minute.
Yeah. Check.
That's small.
Ooh, still checks.
Why you wanna bet small on a ten turn?
It's a fairly relevant card, he's gonna be betting a lot of his ten X on the flop because they're weak hands, so uh, just betting for value slash protection.
Hey, so you bet every turn or what kind of turn do you bet?
Uh, like anything under a ten.
Especially pocket pairs below sixes.
I'm tempted to check or block bet, honestly.
Yeah, block bet small, we, I mean it. I, I agree, you can check or, or bet small.
I like to have some nutted hands in my block bet range sometimes, and this board was just, there was no action, I think it might be a good block bet.
Can we go all in?
Try to make him spaz.
No.
No way.
Uh, what was the turn?
He doesn't have.
Jacked all the way down.
Uh, I think you just check again.
Check, 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 all the way.
Check or block button.
I think you're just checking, no, you're actually betting, okay.
I go for value.
That's nuts.
Yeah.
Yeah, but look how much lower the EV is to do it.
Okay, fire it then, over back.
Went for five.
So fire.
Yeah, I was gonna, I was gonna try to play, uh, play, uh, check jam.
I need to check the sliver, right? Call.
Uh, call.
Oh, oh my god. Old.
It's gonna fall, but then you guys. See the big blinds deep. Nine, six off?
Top is straight.
The nuts.
Come on.
And outplay him. Call or raise, either one's fine.
Hmm, let's get call, I think.
Easy three bet, no?
I think it's.
Yeah, it could three, yeah, it might three bet.
It mixes.
Yeah.
Happy days, we bet ten.
Life sizing up, yeah.
Five, I think.
No, ten. We're deep. We have a spade. What do you, do you play with bucket tens?
Yeah, the ten's good too. We got the six, so the ten we can make.
Also, we have queen high, so we really benefit from getting folds, which a larger better induces.
Here comes the pickle. It's a great turn for the three better, but do we barrel it on that? Cause I would go all in, I think.
A lot of his floats are gonna be ace highs. I'm giving up, dude. I took my shot. Free flop, flop, I'm out.
You get all the king eyes to fold, no? And you're happy with that?
We gotta have better bluff, so, we have to have something like this queen. I don't know, man, I'm out. I don't know what.
I don't, I don't think this is a good jam, man, because.
Ace of spades, we do it, right?
His, his continues are gonna be ace X a lot of the time. You're just gonna be jamming into like a better hand. Maybe with ace of spades, I could get behind it.
Ace of spades, we jam?
I bet, bet again.
Like blessing with the ten of spades in our hand here.
I, I don't either.
But if the, 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 the turn was a spade, we would love it, right?
I think we just bet again if it's an ace of spades.
Man, yeah, see, I would check here. So if it's the ace of spades, I could maybe. Well, okay, you'd have to put the king, if you put the king of, uh, king of clubs out there. So like, you don't want the ace to pair, right? You wanna, you wanna just say like what you're continuing as a bluff. Oh, wait, no, I see, nevermind, nevermind what I'm saying. I see what you're saying.
Oh, did it go all N L P with that ace of spades?
Uh, it was not that prominent of a bluffing thing.
You had to have the queen of diamonds or queen of clubs with the ten of spades.
Was mixing like with the queen. See, I would get caught up in this here, because I'm bluffing the queen of spade like I'm bluffing the ten of spades.
Yeah, so the ten of spades does jam. I'm surprised.
Not all the ten of spades. You don't wanna have a heart in your hand.
Oh, oh, okay. That's gay, I guess confusing, right?
I guess just unblocking his heart floats, you're good.
So it's a tough spot, really. But if the turn comes as spade, then you have a spade, you can, you can try it. It's, it's worth a shot. But no spade.
Especially when you're selling eighty percent of your action with the hell, right? We'll learn on their dime.
I need a, I need a coffee, I'll be right back.
So Nick.
Yeah.
Do you have any classified information to share with the class?
Oh.
Oh.
Or would I have any of that on recorded video? It'd be really dumb.
Your volume's too low, Nick. For me, anyway.
You guys see that T T O wizard thing? By the way. Like a week ago on why you should switch to I C M adjusted range is like at fifty percent of the field.
I saw that and I also saw a very good pro kind to, they're taking a wait and see. Uh, Justin Saliba said there are a lot of the very top pros have been talking about it and they aren't completely sold on all that. Yeah.
Okay. I, I might be making some adjustments, because I find I seem to punt it off a little too early in tournaments.
I mean, honestly, I've been making adjustments for quite a while. When it gets near the bubble, I just automatically am a little tighter, but I think I haven't been tightening up enough with my, I, I think my, I haven't adjusted my calling three bet ranges and my three bet ranges enough. Which I'm starting to notice now how that works.
Yeah, no, I was shocked to see the favor of the like low ace X offsuit hands for three betting, even at like thirty percent, which I rather like.
Yeah, it's blockers, right? You still, you go to your ace high and king high blockers more.
Yeah, which kind of makes it easier to find.
Yeah, well, also post flop. You're, you're also a bit tighter, but also I've been feeling that you wanna do a lot more pot controlling in I C M.
Fair enough. I also can avoid jamming my like pocket sixes against like cutoff with thirty-five big blinds when there's thirty, like thirty percent left of the field.
Definitely, that would be Kenneth Kepel.
You know, it's really interesting.
I love to do that.
They shared all their data too. Like, you can download your spreadsheets and graphs and shit from the video. It's really good. Like, I'm surprised they gave.
Yeah.
Can we three bet here?
Yeah.
Oh, fuck, I'm looking at my screen.
What offsuit kings do you three bet here?
Versus hijack, uh, eight or nine, maybe? Nine, I'd say.
Jack, king, queen.
Nine, king, ten.
King ten?
King nine, king ten.
I don't like king ten.
I don't mind it. It's, he's getting late position, right?
Yeah, ten's blocked the bottom of his range.
Oh, or small blind. Uh, yeah, I think king ten.
Yeah, so the ten blocked the bottom of a green exactly, so you wanna use like one pip under the opponent's opening range, right?
I don't think it's gonna be graded, uh, I don't think it's gonna be graded eighty big blinds.
I think not. I think from the small blind, king nine's gonna be a fold, but you can three bet it from the big blind.
I'd say, yeah, it's ten, right? Very ten. King jack's a better pick.
The thing is, you gotta think about when you're called too, and like, if you get called, you got king nine, oh, it's really bad, right? Like, king ten, at least you can make some broadways.
If you're in the big line, I think it's reasonable, but yeah, small line, you just don't need to get involved. Call. Check, probably call.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, honestly, I'm folding.
Dude, you made a pair.
And get out of here.
Care. Shown to the god, I mean, we got. We don't have an.
So when you, uh, when you make your four, come on, man, when you make your four or deuce, when you make your four deuce, you get, get to cooler like aces and kings, you just never get to do that.
What do you think has more value here, Ken? Four deuce or pocket five?
Well, four two, but I, I prefer to have like an over to the eight.
What do you think has more value against E P here? A pair of eight? Or four deuce?
Pair of eights.
Okay.
Eight with an over.
I don't think so. I think the, you underestimate the turn deuce.
Yeah, dude, the turn deuce is just gonna be.
Better, is it, I think king eight is way better than two four.
Well, say we have four deuce. I put the rock here, four deuce, yeah, okay. Four deuce, we have like around.
I was wondering if we get to raise it. That's crazy.
And then we can raise it with it, yeah. That, that is great, too. And then if we have a hand like a pair of eight.
Way better.
Pair of eight is better, yeah. Yeah. But if you look like a hand like pocket five, Ken.
Yeah, I've said, yeah, no good.
Even like a pocket sevens. To make it more clear for some people. Pocket seven, it's a lot worse than a four deuce here.
Want to explain.
I wanna have a pair with it over to the eight.
Anyway, Ken, the, the point here is you should never fold. If you fold, you're a fish.
Louis, why do you think the E V of four deuce is higher than sevens or fives?
Because you can turn a four, you can turn a deuce, whereas with seven, you can only turn a seven.
That's correct, yep. For anyone who was wondering, who's not here in the conversation.
Alright, now you can fold.
Yeah, exactly. It wasn't that tough.
You can call that. I'm gonna fold that. I don't care what this is, and this goes, I've been saying this for a year. I'm still gonna fold it every fucking time.
Yeah, but you should improve your game and call.
My thing with large is, as the tournament moves along, we're seeing how I C M has a great effect on how we should be playing.
Ken, you're just starting here, you're.
Alright, okay, listen, you guys, you do you, I'll do me.
But Ken, are you, are you continuing with sevens though? Are you continuing with sevens here?
Uh, with a spade, yeah.
Ken, why do you trust your game so much? Are you winning tournaments that now?
I mean, I, I don't know, I wouldn't say that. I, I would just say like, you know, just try to understand the logic of it. Like, if you're continuing with sevens, you definitely like.
None of us here are world champions, so don't be so so straightforward, so like, uh, closed minded about your strategy. Be open. You know, the, the machine tells you this is a spot you can easily improve. Just do it, and.
Can I add one thing that I think, um, Ken, this might help you, like, I don't know if this is part of your logic or not, but like, you know, I, I used to, when I started calling this third pair hands a lot more, like, I was surprised how many pots would just go like check, 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 check after that, like, when the cards are high cards, like.
Yeah, then you can turn it with D as well. That's the other.
That too.
So you're omitting like a lot.
Saturday session. Like, when they have ace high, a lot of the time, it's just check, 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 check. You went like.
And if you check raise when they have ace high, they never realize their equity.
Yeah.
I'm calling.
Still working on the check raising myself.
I'm folding.
Yeah, I'm writing a note on it right now to make sure I do it.
King four?
It's almost impossible to do it too much for us, like.
People respond poorly to aggression. It's always favorable.
A check raise over the last ten thousand hands is twenty percent.
That's sick, dude. I need to do that. Has it been working out well for you?
I mean, I play aggressive in general.
Easy raise.
Oh. Me too, but I, I can't post the twenty percent check raise. That's probably close to like correct, sure.
I think correct is like sixteen or something.
Eleven?
I'm in the high teens.
And jack, uh, yeah, might go big.
A five or, or eleven here.
Maybe s- it's rainbow, maybe sixteen.
I think we need to check a lot on this board.
Yeah, yep, yep. I think this is gonna be a high frequency check and low frequency big bet. Lower frequency.
I wanna check here. A blast. A big, I wanna check, why you?
Louis wants to check.
Check seventy percent.
He never wants to check.
Eighty percent.
Hello.
So why you guys wanna check here?
Why do you wanna bet here? Actually, wait, what's for that? Why, why do you wanna bet here?
How would you play with ace queen, with the queens?
Yeah, I thought queens would bet big, that's why.
Aces. So I would just bet because I, I have hands like tens, ace nine.
Also have hands like jack eight suited, ace queen off, ace four suited, seven, six.
In my mind, this was a board we would bet a lot on.
Can't just be like, well, I have aces some here, so I'm gonna bet.
Have the sets and the sevens and the, you know.
If you look at most of the distribution, you're betting, but these little boards, yeah, sure, these little boards are not good bets for us, but it's a smaller part of the tree, right? If you look at overall.
We're not looking over, we're, we're looking at a nine high board, though.
Yeah, but like.
Yeah, I was thinking the nine high would be pulled.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. But overall, like.
I just thought I was matching my queens, like LP said. I, I thought queens would give a big here, so I thought.
Ace king and ace queen on this board are marginal made. And that's how you're playing it.
I think it's one of those things, like, at this stacked up, he's calling sixes, he's calling eights, he's calling nines, he's gonna have some seven, tens suited, probably, he's gonna have some seven, five suited, probably.
Eight, nine suited, seven, eight.
Nine suited.
Ten suited.
He's just got like, he's got, the equity shifts a little bit, right? Like, he's got some hands in his, in his range that are very competitive with aces and queens.
Our range can't really improve from this board at all, while his range can, like.
Yeah, like, what do we have here? Like, we're gonna have some, do we have a, we don't have a straight. But we will have like some sets, we will have maybe some two pairs.
We'll get the range graph, Louis.
Galen, your argument also does, is also an argument for large bets. When they have some good connectivity and uncompleted equity, they can, you can have big bets, right?
But that's what Galen said. He's like, it's, we're gonna check mostly and then bet big some.
Yeah, yeah, I, I'm not, I'm not saying a big, a big bet's bad. I just think it's the minority strategy here.
Yeah, but typically, don't we, uh, we've gotta learn that you know, like, tens, jacks, queens are gonna be your pairs that are gonna bet large here, right? Your kings and aces will probably bet smaller.
I think that would be probably true.
So that's why I thought this, I mean, clearly this comment I wasn't gonna do, but I thought this would be in there for that reason.
An important thing to recognize, though, is that whenever you're on a board like this, to where you, you know you're gonna be checking a lot, then sometimes you have to fit those really strong hands into your checking range as well, though.
Okay, so like, what do we do with our best unpaired hands sometimes?
Well, ace kings are best unpaired. I mean, I would check that a lot more than ace queen. Ace queen can make a straight in my mind here.
Are you? Are you? But if you apply the same logic, how do aces and kings play?
I think they bet small.
Okay, so why wouldn't you, why would, why would you do one thing with ace queen but not with ace king if?
Well, ace king might bet small, I'm not sure, but I would check it a lot more than ace queen.
That's what's tricky, cause like the solver tends to, I think, sometimes will bet ace king in spots where I would think like, oh, the stronger one should check, but they're just like betting because it can improve.
That's when they're betting it for value.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know.
Louis, what are you, are you, are you looking for something? Are you?
I think I found a little something. So if you're looking for checking range overall in the strategy, it's gonna be like when you have like you know, like these kind of low key cards that we've been working with, but it doesn't really add up here, but it's always like the same pattern. So if you look at like, look at these nine eye boards, right? So it's like nine, seven, six with seven and six. And we check them most. And then if you look at here, there's like always these little gaps. Like, if you look the, at the overall strategy, like, say here, we bet a lot from here, nine, six, six, we bet a lot there. But then it starts to go down and it goes down as like the two middle cards are close to like seven, five, seven, four, eight. Not, not really like, uh, not really like eight, like nine, eight is still like dry, but if it comes like nine, eight, seven or nine, eight, six, when the two cards get close and it's like kind of too low, low card, uh, for the range, seems like we're checking it up. And if you look at like the rest of the strategy here, like queen, four, five, two low cards again. And it's always like, it's not a deuce or a trade that are kind of bricks. It's always like these low little cards. And if you look at ace side board, still the same thing. So we check them most on these ace, five, four type of board.
What do you think the logic behind that is, though?
Well, it has to be board coverage, right? He calls a three bet, so he probably has, uh.
The connectors.
Right, I think that's it. I think you're right.
This, this portion of the range here.
He's, he's better represented for sure.
We don't have at all, so.
Mm-hmm. I would agree.
Whenever we're around here, like equities are almost like in his favor. You know, they are in his favor for all this portion of the deck until we reach like, uh, about this. Like, the bottom end of the deck is his, basically. And then the rest is almost all ours.
Now the top end.
The top end. Yeah, he's got, he's got the nut advantage, as you can see there.
Yeah, because he flat calls our three bet with kings and aces.
We have no range advantage and no nut advantage.
Did you say that?
Yeah, probably. I mean, the ranges are competitive, right?
I'd say we have a slight range advantage because.
No, but that's not enough to play it as a range advantage.
Well, I mean, there's ports to the deck. I mean, honestly, like, if you took an average of this whole, this whole line here, it's gonna be pretty much equal. But, um, I think that's probably a fun, yeah, okay, we're just like.
And with this gun all along.
Alright, king deuce, I'm just calling. Uh, do you ever play check raise here? Probably not. I think we do check call.
I mean, it might to some, but.
I think we have enough other better draws to check raise with.
I would agree. I think it's gonna, you're gonna want like an eight or a ten or something like that, maybe.
And we do have backdoor straight draws, backdoor flush draws, over card. It's not necessarily great. It might, I think it would.
Like jack eight of hearts.
I think it's a pure.
Ten of hearts, ten eight of hearts, ten six.
Uh, it's definitely a fold versus that.
Six hearts, plenty of heart.
And if he bets super small, can we venture?
Yeah, 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 Nick, are you folding this versus a small, small bet?
Are you check raising versus like a two?
Right, so this is such a middling connected board, we're gonna have no issue finding hands to continue with that aren't king two of hearts.
Yeah, it looks like he's right.
If he has to bet one.
Right.
Whereas to do anything, this type of hand, okay. We would have thought a better king fold though.
Hmm, this one is slow. It is, I think it's too early position, I think the low jacks a little too early, I would call.
Bunch of nets around here.
Yeah, I definitely, I thought you were talking about three betting, I definitely call.
Yeah, 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 no, yeah, he was talking about three betting. Uh, that's what I was saying, I would, I think it's just a call.
I thought you wanted to fold.
I wa, no, 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 I wanna call, I just don't want three bets. I do think we fold now.
He got this.
Congratulations, fold. Do you call the suited one?
Sure.
Yeah, I would call the suited.
From the small blind, king five might be the bottom.
You don't, you don't wanna call king five suited from the small blind versus under the gun at eighty? What's the worst king you're calling?
King eight suited?
Hmm, that's gotta be, well.
I'm, I'm, I don't know, I don't know what the range is there, I don't know what my small blind flatter range is supposed to look like.
UTG one?
My goodness.
That or under the gun, I don't know which.
So versus.
So we bet here, right?
I think we bet here.
Even without the spades.
We picked up equity.
Cause, uh, yeah.
Are you looking it up, Ken?
Yeah, so like versus under the gun, king five mixes, king six is pure, king seven mixes and versus under the gun one. King five folds, king six still, king six always calls, calls and king seven mixes again, for some reason. King six is always gonna call versus under the gun, under the gun one.
Is king A to call in both situations?
I'm sorry, what?
King, is king A to call in both?
Yeah.
Okay, I think that's what I said the bottom of me, for me was. You don't like this? It's the same type of board we looked at earlier.
Well, it's like, we got like forty big blinds behind, right?
I think this is fine.
Yeah, it's fun to go all in here without a spade and then bet small with a spade. First off, nets. How often are we checking here?
I'm not checking here.
Happy days, no checking finally. But now. I think it's a bit funky here, no?
You think we're not checking more so, I mean, obviously the board's good, but I mean, this is a pretty tight, tight three bet range. I think like a wider three bet range on this board would have to find some checks, no?
Uh, I'm sorry, I missed the question.
No, I think too broad ways, we bet a lot there, yeah. Look at this.
Yeah.
So hi, Jack, small blind, so here, this is a spot where we bet most of the boards. And why is that? Oh, I see. Because he doesn't defend as wide as the button. Okay, makes sense. So I, I was wondering why, like against a button, you don't see bet as often as this, right?
That's what I was saying, right? Yeah, you need more checks if you were playing like small blind versus button, cuz. The range would be bigger, there are more combos in it.
Alright, that's a good turn, we just ship it. Happy days. Alright, I wanna show a hand now that I played, where is it? Tell me how you guys play this.
I raise.
Three bet.
You could three bet or you could call this. I think maybe, maybe calling's too nitty. I don't know, you probably could call this at some frequency.
Or bet small.
I bet small.
If you three bet, I like betting small.
Okay.
I check.
Definitely a check now. Uh, man, this is not fun, I think you still gotta call.
Like having a spade's bad.
I think having the nine of spades is particularly bad.
You are kind of isolating yourself versus value, right? You're just blocking the absolute nuts here. I don't know, man, I, I'm, I'm playing solver in my mind, I'm a nit, I'm gonna fold this in game, the bet's too big.
It's a funny spot, right?
I mean, I'm just folding, if I, if I didn't have the spade, I'd get sticky, but I, I'm folding this.
So on the flop, I should size up.
But your bet size is reasonable.
That's really the, the EV is good.
Turn, check is good, but mixing.
I mean, that's, without the spade, I call, I don't, I don't have to call everything here, right? Like.
Uh, what did he bet? He bets.
F, I think.
Sixteen? See. He kinda wants to have a spade.
Spade's good.
Well, the, without the spades, the best, the nine of diamonds, nine of clubs is the one that's calling the most.
No.
The hearts are.
On a diamond.
Heart is the worst, so that's the, the pattern here somehow, heart is the worst. After heart, you wanna have, uh. A diamond, diamond is pretty good.
The diamond club's the best.
Actually, the clubs, the clubs are, without the heart is the one that's doing the best.
Yeah, the clubs, right?
I mean, if the solver is mixing folds, you could probably just fold.
Yeah.
That's fair.
Reduce it down to not having a spade and you're not.
I would say so too, Nikolai.
So how often do I ever win here? So I call, but like this is just like fifty, fifty, I flash. Like, I got lucky because of the nine of clubs, I guess, but this is.
I mean, so the issue with playing versus Oliver's population is population has to continue on the flop properly. And then bet when you don't continue betting on the turn properly, they have to be bluffing enough in those situations and.
And are they, and are they?
Probably not, so that's gonna push nines to just appear old.
Yeah, I agree, now, now what? Check.
Uh, do you ever, I just check, I'm not gonna say block, don't block.
Check, fold.
You're, you're losing a lot of your eight X on the turn for sure, I think.
Very three bet, so he doesn't have very many eight X, some suited ones, but not many.
Long jam representing an eight for some reason.
Oh god, he jams, I know he does, geez.
I was wondering if blocking the nine, ten was enough.
Oh my gosh.
Thing is here, man, what's it, like, what is it most likely that he asks at this point?
King tennis, king tennis spades is a reasonable bluff here that you beat. Maybe ace, ace king was just going nuts.
Maybe he has like ace nine of spades or king nine of spades or something, oh wait, he can't have those, you're blocking those.
Maybe he just shows you pocket sixes because he's a crazy person, six, six, seven.
LP, why do you think he has a jack when he check calls flop and then you check turn, is he gonna bet his jacks on a queen turn?
Well, did he bet there?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So it's more likely he has a queen or two pair or straights.
Pocket eights or pocket fives.
Sets.
Pocket, we're gonna lose this hand no matter what we do.
We block spade bluffs some bit, a good bit, we block some straight bluffs, it's like, I'm never dock jamming. I'm trying to get the showdown.
So you guys think that, say I don't jam here.
Hypothetically, hypothetically.
So you got, you can get better.
Think this is bad?
You can get worse to fold for sure.
I think you're just getting called by the exact same hands he's betting with and you're getting folds from the hands you already beat.
Having the nine of spades is terrible.
And you guys think the range is doing that?
I don't know, I, I.
We're gonna say.
I don't think that, I don't think the eight of hearts is a go card, I do think there's gonna be some go cards, but I don't know if the eight of hearts is it.
What's a go card for you?
What hands are you gonna?
A ten.
A ten.
Uh, maybe the six of spades, seven of spades, the nine obviously, um.
A jack pairing.
Okay, so what do you do here?
Jack, jack is an interesting one.
And you have a jack, what do you do with your jack?
I'm checking, you have a jack here, you just check and maybe bluff catch at some frequency.
What do you do with pocket tens?
Same story, probably check and bluff catch in some frequency.
Nines are the exact same hands, pocket nines here.
They are, they are, they just beat pocket tens, is the only, or pocket tens beat pocket nines, yeah.
So, okay, I was targeting a jack X, uh, pocket ten.
See, he just doesn't polarize the turn like that, though.
I agree, I don't think he has a lot of jack X or pocket tens in his range.
Yeah, how do you play your bucket aces here?
If.
At that turn.
For bet.
Uh, if I check, whenever I do check turn, I just check jam, I don't check call.
Okay, so, okay, I went with that pun.
I went with the butt.
And he had aces.
Yeah, this C is here makes a lot of sense, man, like, I don't know, they honestly just improves him if anything. Where he's just like, eh, okay.
Oh, I beat Jack queen now, cool.
Mm-hmm.
I think the eight's a brick for both, honestly.
Aces beat all two pairs is what Nick was saying, that I was alluding to.
Now, let's look at the range. We actually have some lead jams there, hang on.
Yeah, it's just a different, different class of hands.
Bluffing ace seven, which ace seven, where the suits are.
So like, uh, we have some all ins there, we have some, it's a thing to lead jam all in on this.
He says with four percent.
Look at this. Look at this.
Yeah, that's. Point three one combos.
That's not your combo.
Louis, stop.
So I was surprised, okay, I went with that pun, right?
I went with the punt.
I went with the pun, but I was surprised when I saw that the range is actually doing that sometimes.
It's not though.
Must have flushed drops. Say what?
It's doing it four percent of the time versus checking ninety-five point five percent of the time.
Well, you also look at his turn bet and look and see if he, look at his turn bet, okay, and see what if he. Do you think he has all the bluffs on his turn bet that he used, his big, his big sizing? So like, you gotta kinda count these combos, do you think he's gonna have, um, ten eight here on the turn? Or nine, eight on the turn, you like is.
Pocket twos, pocket threes, pocket fours.
You think he's going big with all of those, yeah, like all these little.
Three, ace four.
If he's not going big with all of these combos, it just makes like our play kinda dead in the water, right?
King six, king seven, are they spades? A reasonable.
So yeah, I went with the pun. Alright, does anyone else has hands he wants to review?
I might have one or two, let me take a look. And to review.
By the way, Gail and Matt Affleck, I, uh, finally started a YouTube account.
He's had a YouTube account for years, he just doesn't use it.
I was his fourth subscriber today.
Maybe he's, maybe he started a new YouTube account.
Okay, well, must have a number.
Yeah, I, I only watched half of that video before I logged on here. I found that video like in five of ten.
Alright, here's a hand, this one might be okay, I don't know, this is, don't know if this is a pun or not.
I liked it, I liked how he went through the HRC.
So, oh, he's actually start, so before it was like, he's got like a blog channel that he start, he tried starting.
No, he posted a thing on Twitter, the, you answered the question, the ace eight hand, and then he gave his response on YouTube, and he put the link on Twitter.
Oh, that's smart, I like how he does that, that's actually pretty intelligent.
Do you see this now, you should have three bet pure or preflow?
Which one?
Going range here.
I, I don't know what you're talking about, Louis.
A diamond to me a hand, where he should have, he went with the call preflow.
What's the context of the hand?
Well, so.
As a small blind with ace queen suited.
Yeah, it's pretty close to the money bubble, I remember, probably like five to ten hands away. So I, I'm really, um, shaky in these ICM related spots, so I'm just like. Louis, I might be way off.
You do keep some, you need help, you're supposed to keep some really strong hands in your calling range in that spot.
Dude, if you're, if you're by the money bubble, man, this is a call.
Ken, what's the shortcut to, uh?
I, I can find.
To what? Uh, B.
To ICM.
Oh, I don't know.
Alright.
Louis, are you three, are you three betting this?
Flop ICM.
I don't know, man, I think I am because he's short and there's a bunch of short stacks, so you wanna put his nose in it, you know?
Yeah, I absolutely would normally three bet this.
You know, I don't hate that logic, to be honest, I, I didn't notice that we were basically covering and he seconded chips. I kinda like three betting a little bit more now.
Yeah.
Um, also, for what it's worth, guys, this is one of the better players on the site that I'm against. Like, in terms of winnings and aggression, so.
I would, I would, that would leads me to three bet two hundred percent here.
Hey, but hey, Louis, Louis, look at this, alright, so he's hoping.
Look, give me the hand history so I can put it in HRC, right, and then we could, you guys could continue discussing.
In HRC is gonna be all this. It worked for me when I kept it based at that, so.
He's opening a range, though, it's like, look at the big blinds, the big blinds only got three big blinds, like, he's isolating himself against a call. He's gonna have to, he's gonna have to show his hand, so it's not like he's just gonna have like really wide bluffs here, right?
The last thing this guy expect when he opens from this distribution is. Like for daddy to be sitting at the table, you know? You understand what I mean? He, he's, he's opening in all the shorties, he's trying to be aggressive, right?
Man, I could see, uh, I could see merit for three betting here, but I, I just hate three bet folding this kind of a hand. Cuz you can't three bet call this off.
Like in my mind, if he's twenty-five and everyone is like five and ten, he's, he should be trying to like king six suited.
Also.
Hold on, Dan, how many got paid, Dan, how many get paid in this?
I'm trying to find that, how do I, um, how do I lo- look that up in, uh, poker tracker? I've been trying to look that up.
Make it ten percent of the field, Ken, if you want, ten percent, ten percent.
That's ten percent in the money, right?
Percent in the mu, seventeen and a half percent is.
Oh, that's right, that's right.
Alright, so how far from the money are you?
Um, it had to have been within five or, five or so of the money.
Alright, so.
Um, the pressure, I, I was definitely like, uh. You know, where I, I, it was clear that ICM was significant to me.
That's good, I gotta, I gotta, I gotta PA, I gotta PA payout structure here, so I could get this really close, I think.
I mean.
And, I like calling here, I think I, I, I've changed my mind, I like calling here. Cuz you're blocking his folds, like having a queen's not great, if you wanna like, get at this guy, I would be using like. Maybe suited like ace four, ace fives.
But also, isn't there any merit because he's the one stack that we don't wanna really clash that big with at the table? Even though we are the big stack, we don't wanna lose thirty percent of our stack.
It doesn't work that, it doesn't work that way, Joey.
What size, uh, what size are you gonna use with these stack sizes if you're three betting from out of position two?
Six point one, five point nine, something very small.
Yeah.
I get nine, so don't open jamming.
Yeah, I didn't realize, so if I tag a hand like this again, I guess I should just like screenshot the stacks.
You know what I do, uh, window, I make, I had a note, I open up my HUD, and where it's recording the hands, I just had a note real quick where I am from the money or whatever. That's how I do it.
I, well, I always click the, um, the bubble, the hand where the bubble burst, I, I always mark that as review, just so I, I mark where the bubble burst.
Yeah, yeah, and this was ten forty-five PM, so. Yeah, probably this, like, it might be stone bubble, I'll need to, yeah, I mean, I, I could just screenshot the, uh, like the tournament window, have all the stack sizes and the whole tournament, all the payouts, and how many are left on. That's what I'll do next time.
You can just go all in here because you have to fold pretty much everything you open with.
No, I wouldn't go all in.
Yeah, honestly, I'm not a fan of all in either, it's just you're isolating yourself against his value and getting folds from the stuff that a small bet would do the same thing with, you know, like, if you go small bet, you can still save some chips versus value as opposed to having to run your equity, you don't necessarily want to run twenty-five big blinds.
You're gonna grab the screen, Ken?
Yeah, hold on, I gotta, I'm still setting it up, I got, I've just gotta figure out how many chips are in play, because I realize that affects it.
These are the spots I really want to like figure out how to, how to, how to learn better, though, where like, you know, the further into the, into the streets, like, I mean, he's, he triple barrels off this hand, and I call flop turn and full river, which I, I just feel like that can't be good, but I also couldn't see myself folding flop return. I'm probably supposed to just call down. I don't know, the flush also completes, I think. Shitty spot, that's why we take.
Yeah, if you want to look at, um, ICM spots, try to snag like the prize pool, the payouts, and like how many people are in the field, because when you're, when you're looking at that stuff, it kind of matters, like if it's a, you know, a four thousand man tournament near the bubble as opposed to like a fifty man tournament near the bubble, like, it's gonna change things a little bit.
Yeah, yeah, uh, I'll definitely do that, my bad, I.
It's not your bad.
I'd have the opportunity to have you guys, I, I look at hands, I didn't realize Louis was doing this.
He's gotten a lot better recently about trying to leave time for hand review. Loose passive getting aggro three loves. Uh, Aaron posted a hand, which is cool.
Yeah, hated the hand, but especially because he revealed himself capable of bluffing later.
Yeah, I know that exact feeling, where you're like, eh, I don't, I don't know if I respect you to have a bluff, and then they obviously show you later that they are, and you regret your decision.
Yeah, I mean, it was the worst board, though, so.
There's something I have to comment on, like, a lot of people say that, oh, these states never bluff, or these people in these states always have value, and you just have to be careful when you're using always and never, because everybody blocks at some point. Even on rivers.
Everybody bluff.
Yeah, I've heard other, uh, I've heard other people talk about it, I, I kind of agree that like, every now and then, like, if you're spidey sense, like, I just, I, I just gotta like see one fucking time, like, just maybe you should, you know, like.
I think it's just their responses lean one way or the other more, they're not as balanced, so like, the people who.
I would agree with that, it's not balanced, but.
Right, so the, the people who bluff, they probably over bluff, and the people who are on the nittier side are probably overly nitty.
What was he open, what was he open raise size? Two?
But everybody blows.
Do you two X open that hand?
Yeah.
Uh, he two X opened, I think, yep.
Yep.
Oh wait, uh, seventy-one got paid, I mean, we've said you were for the money about.
If I had to guess, I would say. You know, within four people.
Uh, just, just.
There are people with like two big blinds and three big blinds, so. Yeah, very high I see it.
We should be pretty good set up.
What size are you using for your three bet, Ken?
Uh, a small, I think three point three or something.
Three point three?
I think.
So you're gonna like, you're gonna three bet to like, what is that? In, in chips.
Six point six.
That seems good, that seems good. Uh, I think it's gonna take a more polar approach, it may three bet this some on the value side of things, I just don't think it wants to ever have to fold this. I'm kind of curious if it actually takes jams here sometimes, I don't think it will, though.
What I'm like most curious about is what like villain is tripling off with, like.
The nuts.
Value and bluffs, well.
See that here, this is just gonna give us our pre flop, I, I thought a call might be nice with this hand, honestly.
I was describing this guy to my friend, I was like, other people stop barreling, this guy does.
Who was this?
Uh, Nick Nick.
You start to get an idea now, man, it's still gonna change.
Yeah, it just raises for value. But it does take a pretty polar approach, like, you see, like, there's a hard line between ace queen suited and ace jack there.
I'm surprised all this noise is still in here, I'm gonna try to get this out in a second.
There's still quite a bit of jamming, to be honest, I just, but like.
I was pretty sure there are more jamming than that, ace queen off, you jam.
That's what I thought, I thought I could, I could jam too, because, you know, I have him covered, um, but I didn't think about a small three bet like this size.
Ace queen is just too good suited, I mean.
Everybody bursts, so this is the one thing I kind of see here, um, you take a lot of your small, like jabby bluffs from the offsuit branch there, and the one, and the suited ones, you kind of, you kind of lean towards jamming, because if you get called, you want the extra equity.
Right.
But you do have a lot of raise folding from like, you see the A seven, A six, A five, these are like all the bluffy raise folds. Ace queen off, I think, does a lot of mixing with jams, because it doesn't, that one probably struggles versus a four bet jam, where I'm guessing ace queen suited just has enough equity to run it, which, you know, I'm on the fence about, to be honest, if, uh, you really want to be implementing that in range or in game, just because, like, he's gotta, he's gotta respond and open, you know, what, uh, what you are in GTO. Yeah, I don't know if he's opening the range that it is prescribing.
If he jams, he's gotta call off H plus.
Right, and like his four bet range is gonna be much more linear, even an aggressive player.
Yeah, like, what's his, what's his four bet range here, Ken? Like, do you think he's, where is it at? Do you think he's four betting this on the money bubble? I don't think so.
I don't know.
No, I mean, he's aggressive, but he's aggressive, but he's not four betting.
Bro, you think he's, he's taking jack ten, you think he's just like, fuck this, I'm taking jack ten to the house on the money bubble?
A six. Four, six.
Yeah, pocket fours.
I missed the beginning, how is it looking for ace queen so far?
I mean, verse a, uh, equilibrium state, it's, it's definitely raising. But I, I guarantee if you cl- if you clean up that four bet range.
Can I get the tenor and turner, right?
Yeah, I think so.
But it's still ace queen suited, man, it's so strong, right, and he still has my mind in my mind why it was a bit obvious that there's a three big blind, man, what is he gonna do? Is he gonna go broke before the three big blinds? He's gonna raise to shove into us?
So I have thirty-five, villain has twenty-five, but yeah.
Like, if he shoves something like clear, he's, he's like, what is it gonna be, it's reshuffering?
That's what we were just talking about, like, his, he's not four betting like what, what this says either, so, I don't think, but, do you want to really three bet call it off?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Definitely want a three bath, I think.
Here, Dan, you give me your, give me his, um, four bet range, we'll say none of this, right?
I mean, apparently, I don't really know what people are doing, he might.
Dude, just take the bluffs out, man, just take the bluffs out and make it like an honest response.
Yeah. And let's see how we respond. Give him like ace five suited or something.
Yeah, sure, okay.
He's definitely gonna have a little bit of bluff, but he's not nowhere near this fucking range.
If you wanna, if you wanna give him a bluff, give him ace. Nah, dude, don't, those are calling, those aren't four bet jamming, make it all linear, like, make it like jacks or tens plus.
I mean, he only, he might throw it with sixes.
Oh, geez, I hate these conversations, no, seems crazy, man.
No, he won't.
It's the money bubble, dude, he's second, he's second in chips at the table. Ace jack, he's not jamming ace jack. Ace ten, king jack. Like, that's, that's, that's crazy banana stuff.
Yeah, leave it in there a little bit, small percentage. We don't know, we don't know what he's doing, right?
Ken wants the.
The point is, you just make it a like, yeah, you don't know what the guy's doing, but you're trying to get an idea of what you're doing versus in a completely honest range.
I got you.
Yeah.
And like, the more of these kind of like marginal combos that kind of work their way in, it's just gonna change things up a bit, but you know, i- it's whatever, it's a lot tighter than what this is prescribing, so it'll be interesting to look.
Oh, I misclicked. Uh, okay, got it back. Oh, you know what? I gotta, I think I gotta close this, I think I'm running around the wrong sub tree here. It's not really changing our range.
You gotta give it more time, then.
I mean, it's almost solved.
I don't know what all you took out is.
Oh, his, his range became unlocked for some reason. Wait, we, um, three bet, there it is.
All right, guys, I'm gonna get out of here, I'll catch you all later.
All right, Nick, take it easy, man.
Thanks. Take it easy.
Take it easy, mate. I've been playing the daily, daily deep.
I don't remember if these were in here before, we made him fold all his pairs, so I don't know if these jumped in here that weren't there before.
No, they were doing some banana stuff in there, so I think we were commenting on that.
I mean, this is pretty much converged. Find some more bluffs, I guess.
Seems crazy.
Well, since he's not gonna four bet as wide.
So what's his, uh, let's look at his opening range too, that's another question, kind of got. Like, what's his RFI range from that position?
Twenty-seven percent.
Okay, so.
I can give you his actual.
So this is pretty good, because you're the only one that has him covered, and you'll be out of position versus him, so he has five.
What's his R, what's his RFI range, his actual RFI range?
From, from EP?
Yeah.
Sixteen.
So.
I have an A, out of five hundred twenty, eighty-six out of five hundred.
Right, so this is, this is, this is not good, then. Yeah, you definitely gotta trim this up.
Yeah, I mean, there's a lot of, there's a lot that goes into it.
Hold on, did you say he was a really good player?
Yeah, I mean.
He's a really good player with a V five of sixteen.
Let me, so. Finish my thought for a second. If he's a really good player, he's second in chips at the table, the chip leader's in the small blind out of position. He can open more pots in all these short stacks, and are just gonna want to fold, right?
Yes, so.
Infer that he might be actually capable of opening wider in an ICM range?
I agree with this.
Do you think he's expanding his range ten percent?
Maybe.
I mean, it's possible if he's a studied player, right, if he's a good solid player, he knows.
This stuff.
I know he uses, he uses, uh, all these tools.
I've talked to him. You're gonna, see, the problem is, you're making an argument to nullify any meaningful results to, to kind of robot, to reinforce the results of what it's doing at equilibrium.
Oh, I'm just saying what he might, yeah, uh, yeah, I am, because if he's a good player.
So, so you get no effort, so you get zero useful information back is the problem. Now, if you want to take this and you want to start go jamming twos from EP, or think he's jamming twos and start calling off wider, be my guest, but I just don't think it's reality.
You like this better? Wait, still twenty-six percent, I change, oh wait, man, we'll change when I run this thing.
If you, if you know him, uh, just give it him on the, of the discord.
Even if it's tighter than you think he should be, just make it tighter for like the experiment's sake, to see how drastically.
Fifteen percent, but it didn't change.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I think that we see like, no matter what, it's good enough to three bet ace queen suited here, um, right, like, either as a jam or as a raise, uh, it's still three betting a good amount from the small blind with, with our stacks. It might, it might not if the stacks were flipped, like, if he had thirty-five and I had twenty-five.
So just make them a net, and let's see what happens, let's see how it drastically it changes the response.
Not changing it.
Yeah, it's not changing much.
Might just be because we have all the chips.
Yeah, maybe.
Yeah, maybe I, I didn't think about that as much.
So, I mean, it's like the exact same range, it makes me feel like something's goofy here.
It just might be a function of, we are the table captain.
Yeah, it would make it like, range completely inelastic, though, right?
I feel really uncertain in these types of spots post flop, I mean, as played. Uh, I don't know. I guess most people do, by the time you're getting triple barrelled on, it's kind of like, what do I do?
One other thing I could do that might change it is just make it run the entire tree over rather than the sub tree, see if this changes.
Well, you also didn't hit reset strategies, which I don't know if that affects it or not, you did not hit reset strategies. Which may or may not affect things, I don't.
I think it will, actually. Now, we're just, since he's so tight, we're just super linear.
Okay. So. Right. So it really depends, is what it's saying. Like, the EV of all the crazy shit that we were seeing is really dependent on like what that guy's doing.
Yeah.
With this range, if you two, is he four bet, I think, is queen is a fold? Yep.
Now, it's like, what is this? It's just. Uh, wait, what is, this is under the gun first for bet, he's calling ace queen.
Yeah, he is.
This is his four bet range.
Right, 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 okay, so.
This is our call range.
Okay.
Everything we, we, we call off, we have no folds.
Yeah, it doesn't seem to be.
Yeah, no folds.
No bluffing, no folding, is what this is doing, versus that.
Versus a net, makes sense, right?
Yeah, it does make sense, right? Oh, man, I gotta fold.
I mean, I know the I mean, if he's a really good player, though, I think he's capable of adjusting. But either way, it's like this hand is just gonna raise and stack off.
Yeah, this one's good. Yeah, it's good enough is what it's showing here.
Yeah. So you know, both extremes, you know how to play it, right? Is that why you want to run it this way?
Yeah, it's it's a fictitious nitty person to kind of find the the boundaries.
I didn't see that. I missed all the post flop action. Oh, I could actually just look at it myself. Oh, I couldn't convert it. So Galen, I got a tool.
What you got?
Um, that you might like. Am I sharing my entire screen? Can you see my Discord?
I just see actual Discord.
So you see my desktop?
Uh, I see GTO with now.
Look at this. It's a geometric sizing finder.
Oh, this is kind of this is kind of nifty, right? Yeah, this is kind of cool. I like this.
Next.
And you should make this available. Uh, you should make this available in our Discord.
Uh, GTO Wizard made it available. That's where I got it.
Yeah, you should definitely put it like.
Ranges that gets in here.
Oh, we got charts. I love charts. This is actually, yeah, I want I want access to this for sure.
This is cool. Um.
They they meant it happy those charts.
So this this is an example of this is an example of how geometric sizing is the most efficient way.
Oh, geometric sizings. Wow.
No, but this is they also explain. So looking at this, I kind of got an understanding of when to use large bets on what type of boards. Over bets.
On the turn.
Over bets are a function of setting up geometric sizing on a future street. And the more geometric your sizing is, the more chips, the more money you win. If it if it's just pot, 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 you win the most money. But obviously, you're not going to play all textures that way. It's just an example of how geometric sizing is the best way to get value, the most value. And their over bets in their sims are created in such a way to where you might want to be small on the when you're when it's a texture where you want to bet really small on the flop and then be polar on the turn. Your power bet is most often going to be whatever size is going to be able to get you in on the river with the geometric sizing. So I think if I think about it in that terms, if I understand the boards, the range advantages, not advantages, the board textures, when we're going to set up a small bet power bet on a turn, I think that's when I'll understand how to implement the large bet and what size the easiest. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Anyhow.
Happy days. All right. I think we're gonna wrap it up. Thanks a lot for coming, everybody. See you guys on Monday.